The purpose of this work session is to really let, let the staff just kind of absorb, kind of get some thoughts, perspectives from the elected officials for what the group collectively will kind of try to see or like to see. I understand that this is not a vote tonight. You're not taking any action on, on approving anything that we're talking about tonight, but it is helpful for us to kind of hear the conversations, see what's important among amongst the group of elected officials. And once we kind of are able to gauge that, then we can go back and craft a couple of documents that we think would meet what, what the board is looking at generally as a group and then kind of let you guys review those and see what parts or pieces make sense. So for us, we are really just taking this opportunity to hear from you as, or all of you, to hear again what those thoughts and preferences are and give us some guidelines so we can go back and kind of craft some document for your formal consideration. But we're just kind of attempting to learn what those preferences are.
Well, since I was, I was here when this, this whole document started, I'm a little partial to it. And I think what I would like to see is that we transfer some of these rules and guidance to subdivision developments so that we never have an Aiden Woods kind of thing again. That you can't clear cut without some kind of tree replacement schedule and that we take out, instead of doing street trees, that we do yard landscaping in individual homes. So, you know, other than that, I'm kind of open to everything else. That's just kind of what I want, which I know it's not, you know, I'm trying to turn everything off as I'm sitting here. I really think that when we started this, that the intent was that it would apply to subdivisions, that it would not just be a commercial development. And I also realize that the whole document talks about public trees and...
I think the question's always been asked, how can we bring over a single family to ensure that it follows? And I guess the catch is the language of the site plan and how it's reviewed. And so then I was told, you know, if we brought it over, then you would have to follow the entire design review manual. So underground retention pond, detention ponds, landscaping, 70% brick. So it didn't just bring it just to trees, it brought it to the whole document. So it was really kind of a complicated moving part or whatever. And in maybe short term, the quick thing is to bring it over, but I definitely think it all should be revisited as part of our overall plan. I think that's what staff's plan is to do. But I'm familiar, fairly familiar with the Franklin one. So I've been kind of studying it and just reading it today where they first mandate, depending on the coverage of trees on your site, if you had a 70% coverage, you have to retain at least 30%. There's, they're kind of in an equation where if you start with 10% tree coverage on your site, you have to retain 50% of it. If you start with 90%, you have to retain 30 or 40%. They kind of have an equation that comes up to it. So more incentivizing or ensuring that some of the canopy or tree coverage maintains and stays and then requiring the replanting. So we talked about like on a, on a plot plan or a site plot plan, it will have a count or a calculation of per lot based off the size. You replant six inch caliper tree, you replant 12 inch caliper trees. Then there's a minimum of trees, at least two inches species breakdown. If you have to remove trees in your tree protection area, there's fines and fees that you can pay, but it's more incentivized to replant those trees somewhere else. So put them in a buffer, put them in, add additional planting. So the, the goal wouldn't necessarily be to fine or pay a big penalty. It would be to keep trees or plant trees. That's kind of how it breaks down.
Yes.
That's kind of been, so I think that's discussion that we kind of see too is where we're going to make sure this much is maintained and then we're going to try and incentivize you to keep and replant as much as you can. And that's kind of, we've had some good discussions in our staff meetings with planning and stuff and kind of how I see it. And Franklin has a great breakdown, of course, you know, there's a few pages long and they have different groups and departments overseeing it day to day that make it a lot easier. But like they'll do an audit when homes are built, they go and measure the tree calipers to make sure it got replanted how it was supposed to. And shrubs have to be 18 inches high and all these details. But I think that that kind of direction is what, how I feel would be great to try and maintain and keep existing and incentivize new plantings.
Sure.
And I presume that we could still use the same list of preferred and understory and all the shrubs and trees?
I agree.
So how hard is it to Mr. Butler to keep an old tree alive?
And they, theirs even goes into that as if someone wants to come to the, to the staff and say, this tree is dying, has fungus or it's not going to survive. They petition. The bigger trees you save, if you save a 14 inch plus, you get even more in credits and incentives. It's kind of based off your size. And then there's also an area, a root area that they call, that you need to protect and fence. If you're planning on a tree protection area, you've got to make sure nobody goes into that area. And if you do go into the area, what's your plan of how you're going to do it and not damage active roots and things?
Well, I think we have the, the drip line protection in this or in this.
It does speak to some tree protection, yeah.
So is it Franklin or is it, where is it that has the historic trees? Is that Franklin that has historic trees?
Over, yeah, over a certain size would be a historic tree. I don't know that I read a certain size you could not remove, but it was incentivized to keep those. And I may have just missed that section, but...
I, I think that somewhere it tells what the size is that becomes historic. So I think that, you know, really, I think we can probably all agree that it's protection of our tree canopy. We don't want to make it impossible for people to come in and build houses. But I think there's got to be a way that we can protect that canopy and plus build also.
You know, Mayor, so talking about the percentage and, and where we have these trees located, aesthetically speaking, I, I think talking to the community, they, they want to, they want to see trees throughout the neighborhood, right? So a neighborhood of trees. If we say that we want to keep 30% of the trees and just have that 30% in the back 40 and no trees where the, the homes are, that's, that, that's not necessarily what we're discussing either. So I think at least talking to some people out there that, you know, we, we are a community of this tree canopy and keeping as many trees, trees throughout the, the neighborhood as humanly possible and incentivizing that developer and builder to, to try to do that. So I completely agree.
Well, I think Cumberland Estates is a good example of, it was built in a hayfield and they've replaced trees. But if we had required more on-site, each individual home having more landscaping, there would be more trees than what's there now, even though there were no trees to begin with. I mean, I would think that if we had a landscaping requirement, true or false, whether it's, whether there are trees there to begin with, then you would have to put those, those trees back on each lot?
Yeah, but I think you would still be required to replant on lots and you'd still have tree, uh, street trees. And like in Franklin, your street trees don't count towards your caliber inch on your lot.
And do we, do we want to keep street trees? Or is that just opening the city up for more maintenance and liability and, you know, that kind of thing later on? I'd rather have the street trees back in the neighborhood.
I'm, I really like street trees just from a cosmetic architecture standpoint. I know that Franklin requires what's called a root guard. It's a, an eight inch piece of plastic that's an inch thick or so that goes up against the sidewalk to prevent roots intruding into the sidewalk and, and breaking it up. But some communities I've been in, you know, 10, 15 years later, I think the street trees, it does require some more maintenance and maybe more limbs and things. But I think just characteristic wise of a community, it's something that I like to see.
Well, I do too. I mean, I like that. But is there also a disadvantage of, if you're pulling out of the neighborhood, does it block your line of sight?
I think if it was in a public right of way, we could trim them. We could, we could have the responsibility to cut them back or have the HOA cut them back certainly and maintain and manage them.
Would the HOA own the street trees?
It's in the public right of way. We, HO, just the HOA, dependingly would be in the, in HOA, like in the neighborhood I know in Franklin, specifically mentioned that the street trees were the responsibility of the property owner. And so when a tree goes dead, they send it to the property owner and say, you need to replace your tree. I think that if something was to fall, Mr. Collins, it's in the public right of way. So he, Mr. Collins probably speaks a little bit more, probably we have some responsibility there from the city standpoint. But that specific HOA in that reference, when it was dead, it wasn't the city's responsibility to replace.
If we owned it, why would it not? It was or it wasn't?
Um, it was not. The developer installed it and then the HOA required that the property owner maintained it.
So the, so the HOA does own the street trees?
Or the individual property owners do, yeah.
Ooh. I don't think I like that response. If, if there's a street tree in front of my house.
You have to maintain it?
Yeah.
That's, in that community, speaking of the HOA, if your tree was dead, the HOA would send you a letter letting you know you need to replace it. If you didn't replace it, you'd receive a fine or a penalty.
I mean, if it were my own yard, yes. Mr. Collins, what's the liability, the responsibility of that that you can speak to?
Obviously depends on where the, where the tree is. If the tree is in the city's right of way, it's the city's tree. I mean, it just is.
The city doesn't cut the grass or maintain the grass area. Like, we talked about this a little bit, probably a year ago or something. I sent you that HOA document, but, but like the homeowner maintains that area, they cut their grass. You need to just read the fine print of the language of it, but...
Yeah. And I, I don't recall all the, all the details. Obviously I can go back and read it. The, specific to that, if I remember, in that instance, the, the property in question, the city's property specifically was curb to curb. Everything behind the curb, including the sidewalk, was the property of the homeowners association.
I don't think, I don't think it was the case on this one, but we did, we'll dig into it.
But, but, but then the question became about the requiring of the individual homeowner to repair the sidewalk if the sidewalk was damaged or that sort of, that sort of thing.
I think the city was still taking management of the sidewalk because they inspected it as it went in and required, but we can dig into it.
Yeah, we just have to look. We would be required to inspect it as part of ADA if we required it to do that thing. I know if it's in the city's right of way, the, the city's going to own the tree. And then that, that, we just need to figure out what that language is.
I mean, I would think that if we say that the HOA or the home, whoever other than the city owns that street tree, it gets a little messy and all cloudy.
I, I've been a part of a lot of municipalities' developments, tree trees being installed, and at no time has the city ever came and maintained a tree for me in the right of way for a citizen or a private property owner. So there's got to be something to where there's some kind of language or clause where they're pushing it back to the property owner somehow.
So how long does the developer, until you're finished? You, how long are you responsible for it as a developer?
You would, you would typically have some kind of a maintenance bond. In, in that development, it was, they did not have a warranty on the street tree. It immediately went to the private, the property owner.
I would hate to do that. I don't know why.
It doesn't have to be how, so I'm just saying in, in Brentwood, Franklin, Nolansville, Columbia, I've never, if we put in a street tree, there hasn't been any kind of sense of, of city responsibility on it. It's always been the developer, builder, or homeowner who maintained it or kept it.
So I suppose there's no possibility that a street pit tree would be on a property line?
It would, uh...
I mean...
Right now, they're designed to be in a five foot grass strip. So you'd have five foot of strip and with a street tree in it and then five foot sidewalk.
Right. But I mean, if, if, if you have two houses side by side, is there any danger of the tree, the street tree being on the property line? So then there'd be a question about if something happens to it, which homeowner is responsible for it?
Sure. You get a surveyor to stake it and, yeah. But I'm sure they probably ended up right down the middle before. But the overall discussion of, of street trees, I, I like the aesthetic that they bring. That's it.
I'm not totally opposed to a street tree. I guess I just don't want to assign it to a homeowner.
Well, we, well, you know, we're also, we talked about, you know, requiring new trees, replanting from the plat standpoint, those would be the homeowner private property as well. So they would all be with them.
Yeah. If you plant it in my yard, then it's mine.
It's still your yard that you're cutting and maintaining. There's just an overlay right of way.
Still cutting grass. You're still, yeah.
But if the right of way belongs to the city, which I thought was the whole, why it's called a right of way, why would I cut the grass?
Yeah. So, because you want to.
Because I'm just being nice?
Because you just want it to look nice.
Yeah, you want your yard to look nice, yeah.
I mean, there, there would be, in a practical, basic discussion sense, there would be no difference between a drainage ditch between the curb and the sidewalk and a tree between the curb and the sidewalk, right?
Okay.
The city's going to own that drainage ditch, right? Now, we may get in and scoop it out and clean and do those things, but more often not, the homeowner's going to go out and mow that grass and do that thing as a part of their neighborhood, right? You, you pick any, any neighborhood, neighborhoods without, without sidewalks. Your, your, as a practical sense, if, if a road has been built to the city's standards, you have a 50-foot right of way. Your asphalt and curbing are going to take up about 25 feet, right? So that's going to leave about 12 feet from the back of the curb into the yard that is the city's right of way. It's the city's property. The city can go in, install a water line, a sewer line, a power line, or whatever there is. That city right of way, the homeowner still maintains it typically, but they wouldn't have to. The owner, homeowner could come back and say, I mowed my property line, you mow yours.
Okay.
So, so you do have that, that requirement.
Makes sense.
Most of, I mean, I've not seen that where that's the case unless there's an area that is difficult to mow or maintain. Again, if you have a, I, I guess an easy one, kind of give everybody a picture in there too, really. One is on the backside of Western Woods subdivision along Wiley Circle. If you get to the, to the dead end, if you turn into Western Woods and you go down the boulevard and you take, take a left and it takes you back to Cot Spike or take a right and it takes you back over the other way. If you take a left, and we've all talked about this before, there's a drainage ditch along there between the road and the sidewalk. That drainage ditch and the sidewalk is owned by the city and it's the city's responsibility. More often than not, you're going to have the homeowner go out and mow that to extent they, to the extent they can, but they certainly don't have to.
Well, just like my yard.
Right. It'd be the city's to do. Another really, really big example, now, in that example, this is kind of off-subject a little bit, but in that example, in the future, we could and should require closed stormwater. We should require a covered, a covered drain where there's a stormwater pipe that runs under it, but it's covered by dirt and it's invisible with inlets, invisible with inlets to get you there. Another one similar to that that's really exposed is Horn Tavern Road. There's a series of homes that were built by Walt Totti, three, maybe four years ago. And you have the same thing where there's sidewalks to nowhere owned by the city. The space in between the sidewalk and the road is owned by the city, but it's impossible to maintain with a practical home, home mower. So in those things, that area would be, would be there. So those are things that you just got to think about as you go through. I know the discussion of requiring plantings and let's, let's use Cumberland Estates as an example. One of the discussions that came up was, and I think this is a good idea, is requiring certain plantings as a part of the CO, where you would inspect plantings just like you would inspect electrical, gutters, driveway, anything else. And we would require a certain square footage of landscaping, be it flower beds or some other thing, however we arrive at that percentage or number. So you, and a certain number of plants. You couldn't just have an empty space and call it a flower bed. It would have to be planted and live at the time of a CO. And then a certain caliber inch number of, or certain number of caliber inch plantings, trees on that, on that property. So the effect, in that instance, had we done that, again, for practical purposes discussion, every front yard would have had a tree planted and every home would have been required to have a functioning flower bed at that time for aesthetics. That does get us the ability to do those plantings. In somewhere like Cumberland Estates, clearly you're adding trees because Cumberland, there was nothing there before to the extent, right? So in that case, you're foresting that, that neighborhood or that area. And the areas where you're going to deforest one, I think, Mr. Butler's point of, hey, let's look at the total caliper that's being removed or the total canopy or however we arrive at that language and go back and say a percentage of that needs to be maintained or replaced in addition to whatever you would require as part of the CO for the individual lot.
I like that.
That, that way you can, you can govern that percentage and see what that is and know what the type is to, to go from there. I, I think the health of that becomes important.
So your, your requirement for individual home landscaping would not count as your replacement, if you had, if you took out a lot of trees, it would not count towards your replacement?
Right. You could go above and beyond in those areas to get credits.
Right.
Or create new buffers or things like that. But yeah, your standard would be a replacement.
Yeah, I think, that's right. I think your standard would be what your standard is, assuming there are no trees there at all. I think you're starting with that. Kind of reverse engineered and figure out, okay, here's the percentage of landscape per lot we want to have. These are the, the number of shrubs or size of shrubs or that sort of thing. Identify the number of caliber inch trees you want, or the number of caliber inches, you want to have on there with a minimum size, right? There's, there's a threshold to where if you plant something too small and a wrong type, that could be a 50-year growth for that tree, right? If you plant something too large, it could take it two years to root and a storm or other thing come through and all of a sudden you have guide wires and lines and everything else on these trees in the yards that become trip hazards and other things. So what's the middle ground, so to speak, tree size that you would do for a new planting? We're, we're trying to forest this area. That would be the basic. And then the other component of that would be if there's an area that is treed, then what are the incentives and thresholds to make sure that that treed area remains as forested as can be? And then you, you pay in or whatever you need to do to...
I would also like to see us establish, if a tree is a certain size, that it becomes a historic tree with more incentive to keep that one if it all, you know...
Which we can do. That's the privilege of the board. You kind of just let us know what you're thinking on that. We'll be glad to, to craft that.
And since the red bud is our city tree and I discovered there are 17 varieties of red buds, or is it 27? There was a seven. I mean, those are fairly small and not, will not overtake a house. And, and we have other trees on this list that would not just become overwhelming. But I really like the idea of having each lot landscaped to a certain point. Do we keep up with the, with the no-plant list, what the state comes out and says we should not plant? Do you know, Brandon?
You guys have a no-plant list of what shouldn't be planted?
Well, you, there used to be one in this document. And then I think our city arborist used to check annually to see what had been added to the do-not-grow list.
Yep. Possibly. And we, we need to have an arborist discussion as well, as, as a secondary component to some of this.
Okay. So can we agree that's kind of our overall thinking?
Yeah, I'd like to see that put in the document and see what we get.
Okay.
They even have a calculation, Franklins, of, in a tree protection area, if trees are removed, but you can't verify what the caliper or the canopy was, 80 trees per acre replacement or things. Like they have some, like some questions we've asked ourselves before, like what if somebody clears it and we don't know what was there? They have some calculations of you got to replant it this schedule or you provide us a tree density, you know?
If we have Google Earth, can we not look at that to see what was there before they started cutting?
You just wouldn't know the sizes.
You wouldn't know the size.
Yeah, you, you can guess it as best you can.
Have an idea of at least how big they were.
Yeah. We will, as a part of this, we're going to, we'll have to temper, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out how, how we accomplish these tasks with a small staff.
Right.
Is one thing as well, because this is, I mean, as, as Mr. Butler mentioned, that, that's all great and grandiose, but they have 25 people in these departments to do this and that, that becomes a little problematic for us.
Can we not do it the same way that we do the commercial? You take a section and, because aren't most of our developments, I mean, it's not like people are coming in and building two houses on five acres.
Yeah, we, we have right now. Obviously you can take the representative sample of what that is. And Kevin, Kevin does that and we follow up on that. When we get into measuring the individual trees, I think there's going to have to be some, some process for that. Which, which brings us to, and I apologize, I'll let you continue and then I'll kind of get into the...
No, you're good.
Arborist, so...
Because I think we've kind of, this is kind of what we want to see.
So as a part of that, we'll attempt to craft something that, that pieces that together. That's going to take a couple of weeks to figure out what that is and looks like. We'll do some examination of Franklins in a couple of areas.
And their charter even has commercials and stuff. And I don't know if it's time to, do we lump all of it together in one as we move towards new documents? Or do we leave the commercial as is with the design review or?
I'm a big fan of getting all of it as much as we, as much as we can. I just don't, once we get it settled, I think we need to get it settled. Because we'll be, something's going to replace trees. I mean, it's just a matter of time before something else. I don't mean, I don't mean, I don't mean in the physical sense in the woods somewhere. I just mean some other item of importance is going to come up as, as soon as we can get this one knocked out. There, there are a couple of, of things that we need to address as it relates to this discussion of an arborist. And there are a couple of, a couple of things arborist related and a couple of things permitting related that we need to figure out. First is, in the most recent ordinance, or the ordinance is plural, the discussion of the arborist was a little all over the place. And I think that was more of a Larry Cantrell, not throw Mr. Cantrell under the bus. That's not what we're doing. I just think that was maybe a little bit of a, not really fully understanding the technical side of, of some of this, and that's okay. But there are some specific duties outlined in this document that relates to an arborist, but the arborist is not a city employee and does not have a forcibility authority.
Correct. I remember us having that debate one night. Yes.
So that, that becomes a little problematic as we, as we go into this thing. So if, if we were going to do this in the proper way and if we're going to have an arborist, if we're using the language of an arborist to do these things, and I think that's proper, I think that's a smart thing to do. But if we're going to do this, then I think, I know, then we're going to need to hire that as an employed position by the city. And it can be, it can be a part-time employed position. The, the difficulty with the enforcement of this as written is the board itself does not have the authority to employ an arborist. By ordinance or resolution, those go through city manager by state code. That's our charter. That's not Scotch rule. That's the charter rule.
Right.
But if the role or the goal is to have that person be able to assist with the enforcement authority of this, then we should craft this in such a way to where we can almost remove the arborist language as far as the duties from, from the ordinance in, in a large extent. Craft a job description for the arborist. That job description includes those duties, task, enforceability, all that can be done with that. Hire that position full time, I mean, part time, and then task them with doing that thing. The reason why that's important is there are instances in this document where it states that a person can be fined for violation of this ordinance, but you have an unpaid volunteer with no enforceable authority
Right. I remember that.
To, to perform that task. So much like we've done in the past where we have our, we now have someone who can enforce by summons a violation. Brian Bussell is not a police officer, but he's been assigned the enforcement authority by the police chief, which Tennessee code allows us to do. And Brian, now, if there's a violation of a weed ordinance of some other thing, Brian can issue them a summons. And that's a legal summons that requires them to come to court, pay their fine, do their thing. So if the effort is to have an arborist really to perform two tasks, number one, assist through the tree process generally for all that we just described, and then have it to where we can enforce it, then we're going to need to employ that person and identify a job description that outlines those tasks. Simple to do. We just need to do it through a different set of documents.
I think that makes much more sense. I think that makes much more sense than what we have in this document currently.
Yeah, it, it, it helps us out tremendously if, if we're trying to enforce this thing. And the task of an arborist is to do that thing, then we need to fully employ that arborist with those tools to be able to enforce that. I think the random selection of you are now quote-unquote the city's arborist to go do these things, sounds good. And I think it sounded good at the time, up until there's a time to issue a summons. Then there's a problem.
And there was a problem.
And I, I think we can clean that up and make that, make that work. That's easy. That's a job description and a hiring if we can get someone hired. But if we're, if we're going to put the effort into it, I think we need to put the effort into it.
So then would we remove the arborist language completely from this or just say there would be?
I think we just need to scrub it and, and make sure that what's done in the ordinance, we can, we can affect on the other side through the employment. I, I think as long as we mirror the two and accomplish the task, absolutely, I think we'll do that. I don't think you necessarily remove all the arborist language from the ordinance, because there are some things you want that position to be able to do.
Just to remove the enforcement language.
Yes. And then we can go back in on the employment side and hire someone. And then on the enforcement side, adopt this not only by our design standards, but also by municipal code that's enforceable, just like a traffic ticket. So you can go in and do that thing, just like we have now on the book, the ability to issue someone's a summons if their grass is too tall. Right? We did that by ordinance. We would need to do the same for tree by ordinance.
Do we contract out an arborist or you try to hire a dedicated? Just do we have enough to keep an arborist? I'm trying to look through the Franklin. There's not a lot of language of arborist. I guess I, I envision more of if we build all the front-end work and it's reviewed at the, from the design standpoint, do we need it as much? And then if we do that last inside inspection to ensure plantings could, do we do it with a site inspection? Like you're checking drainage, you're checking trees or things like that?
Yes. I, I think on the front end, to that extent, I think we do that as a part of the initial inspection, right? So let's say we're talking right now, we're talking individual lot sizes, okay? On the individual lots, those plantings become part of the CO, right? So just as they're required to have a sink and a toilet and a driveway and a sidewalk, they're required to have a certain number of shrubs, a certain number of caliper inches. And once they do that, they get their CO for, for that part of it. That's easy on that side of, of the house. Where we get into some of the bigger discussions that we're going to have. And let's say we're talking about a subdivision that's going to clear a lot of property. Or we're going to require plantings on streets, rights of way, that sort of thing for the installation, designated, whatever those are. I think having an arborist or someone qualified to do those things, come in and say, yes, that's the type of tree. Yes, it's healthy. Yes, that's a certain number of caliper inches. Yes, that's the proper location, helps us on the enforceable side.
I think, I think an arborist also helps, Mr. Butler, if, if you go away, we're not going to use you for an example.
Don't do that.
So.
We'll, we'll do that a couple of times tonight. Don't worry, no fear.
I, I won't let you stand up, so I can point to you. But if the developer goes in and says that the tree died of natural causes instead of he plowed over it, then the arborist is more able to say it did die of natural causes or you, you did kill it.
I agree. But do we have enough of those instances to, to employ an arborist? Or would you decontract it out or do you, you know?
We, the, we would likely do it just on a, on a, we would do it part-time and just set it on a rate. And it would almost be a salaried part-time position.
On-call position?
Where there are going to be months that go by where you don't necessarily need them to do that work. But there may be months where they're totally covered up and doing what, what we're doing. So we would work that through with them on, on the compensation side of it as well, to make sure that we have them when we need them, but they're not just not milling around the building when, when we don't. But to make sure that it's, that it is enforceable. Again, if they're going to issue a summons or some other thing, and I'll, I'll go back to part of this document, which I'm, again, this is going to get into some of the, the components of this. But we as a city don't have the right to go onto private property and make inspections of some types. Okay? So let's say we're talking about a development where we're talking about a large tract development and it is under construction. We do have the right as the city to go in and make sure that stormwater is being managed appropriately, that rights of way are being cleared, that things are being done that are going to affect that development specifically as it relates to a construction plan, design, a stormwater regulation, that sort of thing. We clearly have the right to go and do some of those things. Where we lose a little bit of the right and where it's worded in here and some of the stuff is once that, our reach has been exhausted, once a subdivision is complete, okay? It's been done, it's been built, commercial, residential, what have you, then to a large extent, we're limited to observance from public rights of way. Right? Let's, let's go back to the example that we set in Cumberland Estates. Where we're building Cumberland Estates out, we're doing all these things, we're doing, we're doing this work. And through the course of time, those lots are sold, they're now individually owned. And there's a tree in that yard and we recognize that tree's dying or decaying. Or could promote some other disease or some other thing. If we're really going to manage this thing, then we're, in this, it says that it must be removed, it must be trimmed, whatever the case is, to make sure that it doesn't spread disease, cause, rot, fall, that sort of thing. I think having someone qualified to make that determination, if we're really going to enforce this thing is what we're going to need to, to do that. And you know, we're not talking a lot of money. We're talking coverage to make sure when we're attempting to enforce this, that we have the true and correct, accurate arm to be able to do it. And, and I, I think going back and if, if we use the arborist's language and description and use that person as our tool to do this, simply having them compensated as an employee gives us the ability to grant them enforcement authority to accomplish some of these tasks.
So does 13407 that says that the arborist shall have the authority and jurisdiction of regulating the planning, maintenance, and removal of trees?
So 13407, I'm going from length, from memory, applies to public rights of way.
Well, I, I, all of this, but I mean, would that not, would that transfer is what I'm?
Some, some of it's going to transfer.
Okay.
Because thi- this mentions some, there's language in here to where a private citizen has to come get a permit from the city before they can prune a tree on city right-of-way. Where we're not going to issue a private citizen a permit to go trim a tree owned by the city. Now, we need to professionally contract that out or maintain it or remove it or what have you. We would. So some of that language, I get where they're going with it, but we need to clean it up to where it's, it's usable.
Yeah.
So in this case, I think if we're going back, let, let's take the example of, again, Cumberland Estates. And let's say that there's a city ordinance in place that says, any trees on your property, certain feet from the right-of-way or certain feet from a home, whatever, however we arrive there, must be healthy, maintained, lack of, free of disease or other thing. And we recognize there's a tree in someone's front yard that is rotting and could be a hazard. We can send them a letter, but if they choose to not remove the tree, we can just send them another letter.
Right.
And if they choose not to send, eventually we're going to kill more trees sending letters than would happen if the tree just died and fell over. So in that instance, if we're going to do that, then it would be helpful to have someone to go in and say, no, I'm an arborist. I understand that that tree's not healthy. I understand that's a risk. They can assert that professionally. And then issue that person a summons if they continue to fail to address that tree. Outside of that, then we just have an ordinance. We're just sending them a letter. And, and I, from what I'm hearing, the overall goal is to make sure everything, not only does it, is it the forest maintained, so to speak, or reforested, but anything new is maintained and healthy as well. And we're going to need some help with that language to, to police that.
Yes, because you know, we used to use Fred's Dollar Sower as the poster child for what happens if you don't have a good plan in place, because they came in, Commissioner Butler, you may remember, they came in and put stuff basically in buckets until they got their CO. And then there was no landscaping there.
I think it also helps, and two other avenues with, with that, and we do not have enough time. We can do this till midnight. On part of this, part of the, part of that will be, and let's take the historical trees or the, what was it?
Historic trees.
Historic trees. Let's say we want to do that. I think it will be helpful for us to have a professional to identify what that is.
Yeah, how, how old the tree is.
Probably some national standard or something that would.
So someone who can come in and say, no, I'm certified. I understand what that is to help us, help us do that, right?
I agree. We should hire our arborist part-time and on-call basically, a salaried position. So that if we need him to come in once a year or if he needs to come in every day for six weeks.
Yeah, and, and assign the authorities to do that work. I, I think that's easy. The other thing that that does, and again, this will take some unwinding, but there is language in here. And I'm sure I'm going to not get this right, but we can dig into it. But as it relates to the tree board, I believe the tree board is a seven-member board, as, as it's established. It was established to where four members were, were assigned by the mayor upon approval of the Board of Commissioners, which is really approval of the Board of Commissioners. One was the chairperson of the Planning Commission. And then two others may have been at-large or however they were, or.
Mayor and vice mayor.
Mayor and vice mayor.
You mean, read it to you?
Okay.
There were four members. The tree commission shall be composed of seven voting members, all citizens of the city. All members should have experience or knowledge of trees or gardening. Four members shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the Board of Commissioners. The mayor, vice mayor, and chairman of the Planning Commission shall serve as the other three. Of the four members initially appointed by the mayor, one shall be a local contractor slash developer. The four shall be appointed, and it talks about the terms. All members should serve without pay. Will submit all proposals for the community tree to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Any contract for service or expenditure of city funds shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And then it goes into duties.
So here's kind of the dilemma with that. And we can't, we got into this before on a couple of other things. So let's go back to the arborist for a second.
Okay.
The way it's written generally is that if the arborist determines that there is a violation of some sort or the not granting of a permit to plant a tree, remove a tree, prune a tree, whatever that is, then whoever disagrees with the arborist can appeal to the tree board. Okay? The tree board again is the mayor, the vice mayor, the chairperson of the Planning Commission, and four appointees. So if the arborist has told me something and I disagree, I'm going to go appeal to the tree board.
The same people that.
If the tree board disagrees, I can appeal to the Planning Commission, which is also served by the mayor and the chairman of the Planning Commission. If I disagree with the Planning Commission, I can appeal to the Board of Commissioners, who appointed all four members of the tree board, plus the vice mayor, mayor, and chairman of the Planning Commission serve on that. So the appeal process for someone who has been in a disagreement with the arborist, the appeal simply increases its tendency toward the arborist. If that makes sense.
Repeat that last sentence.
I'm sorry?
Repeat the last sentence. Yeah, there's not even a tree board anymore.
But I'm saying, but I mean, but I mean saying, park it, but the appeal process is the same. It still goes through the process. So, so tree board, parking landscape board, whichever one it is, the terminology, you're still appealing to a board. And for every appeal, you're, you're going to a greater, a, a, an appointed group of people. And the, the number is greater than it was. You're waterfalling up instead of waterfalling down. If we were to go and do this to where if there's an, if there's an appeal, and let's say, unless, really there would be two processes for appeal, right? Let's say we're talking about not a violation, but a series of plantings or some other thing, okay? Where let's say the arborist comes in and they go to this masquerading site and they've said ABC needs to be done, for whatever reason. Then their appeal to that would be to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission only. Okay? Because typically the Planning Commission is going to approve this overall, this overall site plan. So however that would go, we'd go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission makes the decision on what this is and they just decide to the adherence of that. On any other thing that will be a violation, that would be a summons issued and that would go to municipal court.
Makes sense.
Because a summons isn't actionable. It, it's a, it's an, it's an incident issue. It may not be a misdemeanor. It's less than a misdemeanor. But in that, in that case, if they issue a summons, the summons goes to municipal court. The, the tree's dead, they won't remove it. There's some other thing that's clearly codified and won't be done. So in that instance, they would appeal, the, the appeal would be to, to the, to the court. Right? Because that's a, that's a violation of code. If there's an interpretation of what the arborist says applies or is appropriate or doesn't apply or isn't appropriate, then so be it. They just have to go to the Planning Commission on that, on that larger project and it is what it is. The only time that that's going to be an issue at all is if, and this is going to be really a developer issue or builder issue, and educating them on what is allowed to be planted. The question, the only other component to this is going to be if we make the landscaping a part of the CO. And for whatever reason the inspector says, what you've planted does not meet the code and we're not going to issue you a CO, then someone's going to have to be the mediator in, in that thing. But in that instance, I think that if there's a question, that's going to have to defer to the arborist. And the arborist just to tell us, maybe it meets or it doesn't. And then we, internally staff, we issue that CO if the arborist tells us it meets that, meets that thing.
I, I, I like all that. I mean, that makes complete and total sense.
Okay, so back, several years back, as the chairman of the Planning Commission, I sat on the tree board. Mike Berkley, as an arborist, was a consultant for us, which was amazing, because he knew what trees.
Sure. Smart guy.
He gave us good information, good direction. So if we do hire this, this part-time employee that is an arborist, I would also, as a member of the Parks and Landscape Board, which I am right now, I'd like to see, we just meet one Monday, first, first Monday of the month. I would like to see that person also, you know, meet with us when we meet so that we can kind of get their feedback. I think that would be a good idea. Also, several times it's been brought to my attention, I'm, you know, I need to look into this. But as a tree city, we're actually supposed to have an arborist, from what I understand, hired at, in some capacity. So I think we ought to check into that as well.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the specifics on the tree city.
I don't either. I haven't looked into it, but I need to look into it because I've, it's been mentioned several times, so I just want to check that out. And, but we would take care of that issue if we had.
Certainly.
A part-time arborist. But I would like to see them meet with us the first Monday of the month.
Yeah, we, I just have to try and, you know, we don't know what their schedule. Obviously, we haven't hired them yet. We'll get in. But if we can make it work, it'll be helpful.
It would be nice, because when we talk about things, to have somebody there that has the knowledge.
Sure.
Would be a good idea.
It would also be helpful to us with, with that, let's say they've gone on, on a site, you pick it. Or they've gone in and they've done their inspection on, on a large development or some other thing. It will be helpful to, helpful to have them be able to craft their notes, just as planning and engineering does on their inspections as well. So we, we've, we've identified this or identified that, and they could kind of give us a pass/fail. If it passed, you don't really need much explanation on a pass. On a fail, just kind of explain what that is. They're supposed to have, you know, 500 caliper inches and they have 385. I don't know. You pick whatever the thing is. Just so we can make that a part of our notes as well on each individual project that goes through. And that wouldn't be difficult to do. Obviously, we'd have to have that if there was a denial of a CO or a. Obviously we'd have to have that if there was a denial of a CO or denial, denial of acceptance of infrastructure. You know, you, you do have some leniency and some ability as the board as it relates to large tract developments. Ultimately, ultimately you do have the ability to not accept infrastructure. Okay? The way this is supposed to work, and when a developer comes in and they, let, they were saying, let's say we're talking about a 30 home development with two streets. The way this is supposed to work is when that developer goes through, for every plan that makes it through the planning commission, once that site plan's approved and they were actually start work, we sign a developer agreement with that developer and it outlines what they're supposed to do. Streets, curbing gutter, stormwater, whatever else is going to be a part of that city owned process. Once that work is done, that should come back to the BOC for acceptance. You may recall, we've had some discussions about, and we accepted one, I, I think not too long ago in a neighborhood that came in, um, Sweetbrier came in 14 years after the fact, but it still came in. But with that, you can go back in and refuse to accept that infrastructure until all the other components that aren't privately owned or resident owned are met. So let's say we're talking about a landscape buffer or some other thing, we're not going to own that landscape buffer. The HOA is going to own that landscape buffer forever and ever if there is one, right? Who polices that or what is our ability to make sure that at least it was done right once? Okay? At the time that we accept our infrastructure, all of those items should be complete. And while we're not accepting the ownership of that, it's owned by the HOA or whatever neighborhood group owns it, we can go back and say, we're not going to accept ownership of public infrastructure until all common area plantings are complete. Give some ability to do that. Obviously that adds a little layer of difficulty to it, but it's, it's a level one time. Something, something to go back and police how we do that because the reality of it is, let's go back and say that we're doing this 30 acre development, 100 acre development, you pick it. And let's say it's supposed to have 20 acres of, of plantings in their open space. We have the individual plantings on the individual lots, right? During the CO process, we can, we can make sure that individual lots are what they are, we accept them. We're never going to accept the common area. We're never going to accept the, um, buffer or the plantings for that. So how and when do we police the plantings of that thing? Okay, you must do this thing, but what do we do if they don't?
Not accept the infrastructure.
You're going to have, that's right, you're going to have to have some tool to go back and show what, what that is. Aside from this conversation and going back out, Mike and Kevin and I will have to go back and look at how we craft bonds and letters of credit for public infrastructure, right? Because we're going to have to add some length or change that or do something to make sure that we can, we can word that because we can't make someone extend a bond. Right? In years past, the way this has happened in Fairview is, the idea was that the developer is the one who decides when bonds are going to be extended. Sweetbrier Springs, I wasn't, I wasn't killed when I said 14 years. It was that long. What happened was every year or every so often, the developer would simply come up and deliver a bond and say, oh, I've extended the bond for a year, I can't, I can't do the asphalt work. That's not for the developer to decide, that's for the city to decide. Because the city has entered an agreement with them that they will complete this task within this period of time. So rather than them coming back and saying, hey, city, too bad, I didn't do it, I'm going to just, I'll maybe do it again next year, the city goes back and says, no, wait a minute. You're either going to complete the work within the time you specified or we're going to call the bond and complete the work. That's how it should work, that's how it's supposed to go. So you can ensure that this infrastructure is done at the time and manner and construction type that it's supposed to be. What we need to do on our side is go back and say, if we're going to include these plantings as a part of that, we're going to need to extend that window in the bond long enough that we can enforce the adherence to, to the plantings. We'll, we'll figure that out, but there's going to have to be some mechanism other than saying, you didn't do it. Because whether they did or not, we can't police and go back and grab it now anyway. So I think if we're going to enforce the plantings, then we need some tool to be able to do that. The only other option that I can think of, and this is again, a longer discussion, and I have not vetted this with Tim, so we'd have to really dig into this, but the only other option would be to make it a civil penalty against the developer instead of a criminal penalty similar to what we've done with stormwater. Where you, you recall in stormwater, now it's a civil penalty and if someone comes in and doesn't do that work, we can take them to civil court. We can assign them a penalty of up to $5,000, I believe it is. And if they don't pay, we can take them to civil court and sue them civilly for their failure to, to perform that work or that task. It's not criminal, we can't write them a ticket, but we can certainly sue them. So we can, we could go that route as well. But we need to figure out the mechanics of how that works. But there's going to have to be some teeth to, what do we do on the gross plantings that are not going to be in city rights of way and not going to be on CO property?
But if we refuse to accept the infrastructure, would that be enough to make them, make sure that they had that?
Not necessarily.
Oh.
Here's why. The bond itself is specific to publicly owned infrastructure.
Okay.
I don't think we can ma, I don't think we can bond private, right? The plantings and the other things, right? Now, if it's going to be a private subdivision in a private neighborhood, we can bond those and we do to make sure they're built to city standards in the event that they ever become public, right? HOA folds, they want to deliver these items to the city, it's important to make sure that the city owns that, the city could take that ownership and understand that it's built to our standard, right? On, on the other side, I think we need to figure out how we police some mechanism to make sure that everything that's done outside of the CO and outside of the city right of way is done. I, I think the civil matter may be the best way to go is if we're doing stormwater that day, do, do the others.
So you'll get with Mr. Potter and see what the best plan is?
I, I'll, we'll, I'll run that by him and see if we can mirror that language, because we're not going to own stormwater either, right? But we can still go back and, and sue civilly if it doesn't meet that. The question would be, how would we, how do we police the other? And I don't know what that is, but we, we're going to have to come up with some mechanism to do that if we're going to require this. I, I think there's, requiring it without the penalty is not requiring it.
So could you, could you draft us something by the first meeting?
2025, yes.
See, I was going to say the first meeting in September.
We, we'll put together kind of a broad scope of what we discussed on all this, get that out to everybody and kind of get some pros and minuses, just what do you think? Everybody's kind of red pined and make sure we didn't miss anything. Once we get that information back, then we can kind of craft something that fits within the regs and ordinances that we're trying to do now and see if we can make it, make it work.
Is there anything else from anyone on the board? If not, we'll take a break until seven o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank y'all.